...started and planned for how to implement them into the future. And also look at possibly new ideas for open space recreation and greenways. But with this project, in order to get approval to do the conversion, we have to go through the Pennsylvania Department of Natural Resources and Conservation, and then we also have to go through the National Park Service because it was a federal grant back in the 70s that we received. So what we have to do is we have to prepare the environmental assessment, which looks at the property, is there anything, is there anything we're going to harm by doing what we're doing? We don't believe there is. We're replacing a recreational opportunity with another recreational opportunity. It's a little different. You know, it's not golf or it's not disc golf, but it is a different type of recreational opportunity, which we think would be very well received by our county residents, especially with the potential for future biking along the Suspana River. We also have to say what we're going to do with the property. We also have to have a plan, which is basically, at this point in time, we just want to make the bridge safe, have a parking area, and have a trail that goes down to the bridge and the water so people can do passive recreation at this time, fishing, kayaking. You'd be able to carry, kayaks aren't too heavy, you can carry your kayak down to the river and put it in there. It's very nice there. And we'd be looking to remove the old pump station. So that's what we intend to do for the near future. In the long term, once we're done with the partner recreation plan update, we would hope to go after additional funding to extend that trail further. Penn College has worked with us very, very much to extend that idea. They will also be interested in giving us an easement over the portion of the trail that they, the railroad area that they own, which will extend us up further to an area where the county already owns another section of, it's where the pipe from the landfill goes to the sewer treatment plant up that way. So we'll actually be able to eventually extend that a little bit further, so it'll be a little bit of a longer stretch, and then we're hoping to work with Union County to extend it further down.
As long as you get done with the approval of the National Park Service.
Once we, the common period for the environmental assessment ends the end of August, once we receive any comments, what we do is we'll submit them with our final application to the national, well, we submit it through DCNR. We'll submit it to DCNR, they'll review it. If they approve it, then they'll send it to the National Park Service, and the National Park Service will then have to review and approve for us to convert.
Thank you.
We can't purchase the property or move forward until they give us that approval.
Right. Excellent.
Sorry, a little bit long-winded, but.
No.
The complicated process that goes back to 1978 when the three of us were young.
I was in fourth grade.
Yeah. And where the, they took $20,000 of federal monies and tied it all to the entire golf course, 435 acres. And this is the outcome of what we have to do in order to
Yep.
To be able to develop part of the land for housing.
I did get to ride on those slides over there once, though.
The water slide?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So someone, some, we may sometimes think, oh, well, why does the federal government do that? Well, they don't want to give communities money for recreation and then turn around and find out that it's become a strip mall or a shopping center, right? If they, if they, just like us, when we vote to appropriate money, we want to know that money is being used for the purpose that we're telling the taxpayers it's being used for. And we thank Penn College because frankly, when we decided that we wanted to do this, we needed, we needed their help to find land, and they helped us, and we appreciate it.
Yeah, and they've been very supportive. Pat Marty did want to be here, but I don't think he was able to make it. So, and they have been extremely supportive, and we're really hoping to partner with some of their students in their technical programs to help with some of the improvements needed on the property because they have a lot of, a lot of expertise in some of the items that we're going to need. Plus, their heavy equipment is right next door.
Right.
We're very helpful on that.
Okay, thanks, Shannon.
All right, next presentation, Jamie Sanders, Lycoming Composite Mountain Bike.
Good point, Jamie. Thank you for being with us and bringing this good-looking crew with us, with you today.
Yeah, my pleasure. Thank you for having us, commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to present here.
Do you want the lights out for the?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna start
Okay.
From here, and then we'll hit that, but I'd ask all the team to come up here so you guys will be right here and available because we're going to ask you some questions. My name is Jamie Sanders. I'm a resident of Williamsport, just north of the hospital here. I work at Natural Waterscapes and Sales in South Williamsport, and I'm also the pastor of Hillview Baptist Church over toward the Gardenview area. And in my spare time, I'm a mountain bike coach.
If you stand up here, they can see you on the camera.
Oh, good.
They can't see you up there.
Come on up here, guys.
Yeah.
It's okay.
Who knows? You might make a face here or something.
All right. I'm also a father of three of these mountain bikers that are here today, so we're very busy and active in this program. A little bit about the team, this is the Lycoming County Composite Mountain Bike Team. That means this is a mountain bike racing team made up of students from across our county. And in our, in our organization, we've had students from every school district in our county, so there's been widespread participation. We compete in the Pennsylvania Interscholastic Cycling League, PICL, we call it Pickle. So I may say Pickle, that's what I'm talking about. There's six to eight race events throughout our season, which is a fall season, and those events draw up to 1,500 people. The first one that my family attended, we were absolutely astounded by how many people were there and how many people were involved in putting together these incredible events. And so we, we compete in areas like Gettysburg, Johnstown, Pittsburgh. We even have a race in Maryland, so there's a lot of traveling involved. But the goal of this, and it's also, Pickle is part of a national movement, national, international, National Interscholastic Cycling Association, NICA. So Pickle and NICA are easy ones to remember. But we're part of a nation, national movement to make mountain biking a school sport. So we have a composite team because that's how you start in an area, is you get a composite team together until you have enough kids from any given school district to have a team for that school district. And many areas across our nation are at that place where individual schools have their own teams, and they're competing at that level. We're competing with composite teams from Danville and all over in Pennsylvania and even in Maryland and New Jersey. So our, our reason for being here this morning is to petition the county commissioners to approve or to fund a $500,000 gift to, to build a skills park, a bike skills park. That is what we're looking for. And before I go any further, I just want to kind of blow up this picture a little bit and what we're all kind of thinking and what many of us whose kids are involved in this and folks who are also active in the outdoors are interested in. We're all aware that Lycoming County is aging, and our median age is rising, and our population is decreasing, and so we have a situation that we would like to reverse. And speaking with a major employer in the area for Blaze Alexander, he was telling me, I have some great students from Penn College. They're incredibly talented, they're exactly what I want and what I need, and as soon as they graduate, they leave the area, and I cannot hire them. I cannot convince them to stay in the area because they want to go to Pittsburgh, they want to go to Philadelphia, they want to go to DC, they want to go to a larger area where there's more things to do. Precision Metalforming, right over here on Reach Road, America's leading producer of extruded metal products. They make equipment for NASA, they make equipment for the Air Force, they make equipment for, every icy machine you've ever seen has one of their canisters in it because it's extruded metal. Extremely successful business, but they cannot keep students here for, they have lifelong careers there, beginning to end absolutely wonderful careers. They cannot keep our students here. Tremendous opportunities are there, but there's no one to fill them. Natural Waterscapes, why I work. We just opened a second location last month in Dallas, Texas. An incredibly successful business. We need another salesperson. We put the word out, we can't find someone in this county to fill that spot. So we have a situation that we need to reverse, and it's time for us to, to change the way that we think about our area and, and create a future that we're all looking forward to being a part of and working toward. And I think that future involves outdoor recreation. We need a future that will change the atmosphere, the quality of life in Lycoming County so that we can retain our graduates from our great institutions that are right here so that when they graduate, they're looking forward to having a career in this area, raising a family in this area. We have long pointed to our prosperous past in the logging industry. Oh, they're not. That's lame. We've long pointed to our prosperous logging, that was a century ago, and it is incredible and a beautiful history, but we can no longer look back, we have to look forward and create a future that we are looking forward to. We change the narrative about Williamsport into being something that people want to be a part of, not something that was once great. And many cities across the nation have made the jump to outdoor recreation and retooling, creating an atmosphere that is a really, it's a lifestyle change, it's a, what's that phrase? It's a quality of life change. So it's, you want to live there because there's quality of life, and that drives businesses to come, that drives people to stay, and that drives the whole economic machine. And so as we talk about building a mountain bike park, that's, this is a small step in that direction, but our community is interested in not just a bike park, but in, in creating this kind of future. And I'm jumping ahead of my, my lovely presentation here. And we're proposing Lycoming work toward developing these natural resources, create outdoor recreation spaces and a lifestyle that will position us as a center for recreation and enjoyment of the outdoors. Many cities across the nation that I already mentioned have made this change. I'll reference one. My wife and I met in Chattanooga, we were working in the outdoor industry, and that city was undergoing, they went, moved from being the dirtiest city in the south to being an absolute, to being the bolder Colorado of the east. Absolutely drives their recreation, recreation drives their economy, and now they have a VW plant there. I recently flew the mayor and some interested parties down there to see what they are doing to create a vision for what we want to see happen here. And I've been gone for 13 years, and the transformation in just that 10 years, we were already, it was already crazy, but it's just gone to absolute next level. The economic development that that has driven has been incredible. The home that I bought for $109,000 when I lived there is now valued at $440,000, and that is a 1,250 square foot cottage. Not the same style as the older houses that we have here, but the same idea. But people are now spending big money to make those lovely places and recovering the heritage of that area as we could do here with a greater economic movement. So I want to get back to the reason we're talking here. This is a small step in that direction. It starts with a change in the way we think about our area. All of the resources that created the logging boom a century ago are still here. We have, drive in any direction, a couple miles in any direction, and it's absolutely gorgeous. It's a place you want to be, and it's a place you wish you could recreate and know how to recreate. And creating an outdoor atmosphere means we're developing those places, and we are, we're creating spaces for people to be. And the presentation that, that preceded this one was a real eyebrow raiser because that's exactly what we're talking about doing. So it's, it's great to see that we're thinking the same thing. It starts with things like this park, and most of all, it starts with our children. Teaching them to enjoy the outdoors in a healthy style with the goal of creating a place that they want to live in, and a place where they want to raise their family. So I want to talk to some of the kids here that are part of our mountain bike team because that's part of what we do. And Izzy, I'm going to ask you to come forward, and remember to introduce yourself and tell us how old you are, where do you go to school?
Hi, I'm Isabel Sanders. I'm 14, and I go to Williamsport Area High School.
Now, I didn't ask you a question. You're doing really well so far. And what are some things that you feel like, what are some ways that you feel like you benefit from being a part of the mountain bike team?
Well, we learn a lot of things for starters, like we learn coachability, leadership skills, perseverance, how to set and achieve goals, confidence, and a lot like that.
Very good. And you think those will be helpful, do you think those will be helpful skills for you as you grow into adulthood?
I definitely think so. I think, like especially like problem solving and being able to make spontaneous decisions.
Very good. Thank you, ma'am. Noah Skolnick, could you come forward, please? Need to introduce yourself, your age, and where you go to school?
Hi, I'm Noah Skolnick. I'm 13, and I go to Williamsport Area Middle School.
Very good. Noah, what are some of your favorite parts of being involved in the mountain bike team?
I really like being a part of a community that is accepting and that is able to do something you love with your friends and family.
Noah, you recently participated in the Mountain Bike Nationals. How did that go for you?
It went okay.
How did, how did you place in your races there?
I got fifth and second.
Yep. And how many times have you competed in nationals?
That was my first year.
First year, all right. Noah, thank you so much. Noah started one of his heats in the very back because he hadn't raced before, he ended that race in third.
Wow.
Which is an extremely difficult accomplishment. We have some actually very accomplished mountain bikers here doing incredible things, and even at the national level with Noah there. So who else could come up here? Aaron, where's Aaron? Aaron is just starting out. Aaron, can you tell us your name, your age, and where do you go to school?
My name is Aaron Skolnick, and I'm 10, and I go to Curtin Intermediate School.
Great. So Aaron is just starting out with us, and Aaron, what are you looking forward to here? This is the beginning of your first season. What are you looking forward to in mountain biking this year?
I'm looking forward to racing and learning mountain biking skills.
Very good. All right. Thank you, sir. So that's a sampling of some of our racers. We also have a graduate of the program because this is not a brand-new program right here, and he's going to introduce himself and tell you, he's graduated from the program, is actually helping us coach, but he's going to introduce himself and tell you some of the things and ways that he's benefited from being a part of this team.
Hello, everyone. My name is Easton Sones. I am a Hughesville High School and Lycoming County Composite alumni, is that's what we want to call it. So I go to Slipper Rock University now for exercise science and a pre-professional track for physician assistants. And I'm a part of the student government there, actually, and seeing a local government here run is actually super cool. And the reason I got into student government was for outdoor recreation, and among a lot of other universities, we have an issue of mental illnesses, depression, anxiety, all that kind of stuff. And my push was to expand on our outdoor recreation resources at Slipper Rock University to help these mental disorders and stuff like that. So it's also super exciting to see all these young kids here have motivation to build up their resources here, and among with coaching here and all this stuff, it's been an amazing opportunity for me. So I'm super glad to be here.
I'm going to ask one other person to come up and sort of tell about their experience, and that is one of the parents of some of our racers. And I'm going to ask Carl Fisher if he would come forward and tell us what it's like to be a dad of mountain bikers.
Yeah. Good morning. My name is Carl Fisher. I'm 40. I'm an alum of Williamsport High School, and I'm a business owner here in town and a parent of two students on the team, and my first year coaching. But it's, it's really been exciting as a parent to see them involved. Like Izzy said earlier, just in confidence, to see how, you know, my kids are involved in various sports, but to see confidence grow, to see their community and their friendships grow, to have another opportunity to be with, with students not like them that might run in their initial social circles. But we have a, we have a real gem and a real opportunity, I think, in our outdoor recreation here. And with, with this sport, as we've seen it grow so tremendously just over the past few years, we are, we are located in such an ideal place. It brings me a lot of excitement to see where this can go.
Great, thanks, Carl. We do have some slides we want to check out here, and is someone advancing those for us?
Just tell me one you want to.
All right. You can advance to the next one. Here's a picture of our, some of our team members, many of which are right here, and there's some facts about our mountain bike team. And it does have a goal of building strong minds, bodies, character, and community, and we are watching that happen right before our eyes with our own children and all the kids that are on the team. We currently have 27 middle and high school athletes and 12 volunteer coaches, and we have many school districts in Lycoming County represented. Our two main practice areas are here at South Williamsport, right across the river, and in Hughesville. We have regular practices. I think we're having currently three practices a week, and then we have rides on the weekends. You can advance to the slide. Here's some pictures from our race days, which are always a great time, and you'll see Noah there on the, on the podium. We see him there often, doing a tremendous job racing. We see many of our racers on the podium doing a great job. I was going to ask Spencer, Spencer, can you come up here and tell us some of the things we do in practice?
I'm Spencer Beatty. I'm 13, and I go to South Williamsport Area High School. During practice, we do like short courses, we learn how to maintain our bikes, we learn how to, just like a ton of bike skills. And it's a great, like, we learn like character, we learn stretches, we learn how to like maintain our bodies, and many more.
Thanks, Spencer. And I do encourage you to look at the NICA website because it tells you the goals of the program, and their extent that it's a very, very well-run, well-developed program for, for our kids and for our students. We can advance to the next slide. This is about practice areas, and this is where I was going to throw it to Joe.
My name's Joe Tavani. I'm team director, and couldn't be proud of, more proud of our student athletes and coaches that are here today. Very excited about this. The, just to hit on one, one point from the previous slide about trail maintenance. One of the things when, when I go talk to students at, at the local schools, we, I ask them, you know, who cleans up those trails? And, or who, first off, who cleans up the, the building that they're in? And of course, they know the janitor that does, but whoever that is, is not out in the woods cleaning up the forest. And so who does that? And we do, as, as trail users. And already this year, we, between the State Forest and Rider Park, we've already, the team has contributed in and around 200 hours of trail work. We can't use tools, but we're picking up a lot of sticks. So, anyway, as, as far as practice areas go, where we practice is in South Williamsport Park and Hughesville High School at the fields. Those areas, they're pretty flat, not a lot of areas that challenge, that challenge our students, and Skills Park would provide those, those things. The other thing we do in those areas, which we're, we're preparing the students to ride in the, in the forest and safely. And so places that we do ride, Williamsport Water Authority, Rider Park, and the local state forests, Tyotan, Bald Eagle, and Loyal Sock. We don't have a dedicated practice facility, we're using the different fields that, that are available to us. Go ahead. So this is a, just an overview of what a mountain bike Skills Park is. It goes beyond a, a pump track or just a few obstacles. There is a progression to, to this, so that you can advance from a push bike, which is, you know, just a bicycle without pedals, all the way up to advanced skills that, that would challenge any rider. A great example of this is Harvest Fields, which is located over in Bolzberg, very close to State College. We spoke with one of the leaders of that project over there, and, and we've, where we've got some of our numbers and ideas, this was, as to what a, what a great Skills Park would be, comes from, comes from that area. And it's very, Josh would love to host anybody that would, would like to see what that area is all about. There's, there's a trail portion of it, there is actual built features and things like that, as you can see. They have a BMX area and so forth, for the, all sorts of different skill levels. Well, this is a rare, rare photo here of our team. We spent eight years, seven years getting this photo. We're starting our eighth season here, so, but this is a group of us at, at Race Town Lake. There's, I believe around 30 miles of, of trail at, at that lake and a Skills, Skills Park as part of that, and this is our last event of the season that we participate in. So one of the things I wanted to, to bring out is what, what sort of cycling is happening right here in, in our area? And one of, since 2015, Iron Cross has actually been, been happening here. Actually, the very first year, we had a downtown, downtown start and finish. Ever since then, we hosted at a South Williamsport Park. It's been, there are over 20 years the, the event's been happening, and it's an October event. Along with that, the, there is, as well as noted, the, the people are, that come to that event can come from Canada and all over the East Coast. Go ahead and do the next slide. Some other, so Iron Cross has been here since 2015. Transylvania Epic is happening over in Center County. That is a, was a seven-day, now five-day mountain bike stage race. When you think of stage race, the most common stage race that everybody knows from cycling is sort of France. This is a little different, but in, on, on dirt. Our team has been part of Endless Mountains Gravel, which became Grinduro last year in 2022. It is an international event. There are five Grinduro events across the world, and we host one in Sullivan County. Our team is, benefits from that, but we put, we put the, the event on, and parents and the students come out, and we, we have our, we mainly man the aid stations. And our student athletes, I got to tell you, one of the, one of the most positive comments that I see in all of the reviews is your guys' enthusiasm, dressing up in costumes and having a great time out there. So, and they comment about how they're, they were amazed at how many students that we bring out to those aid stations to put that on. And again, it's an international event, there are people from all over the world that come to, to that event, and that is held in, in June. And then there's Unpaved. Unpaved is run out of Lewisburg. The last two years, they have over 1,000 participants at that event. That event is, is, the draw that very similar to Grinduro, very similar to Iron Cross, drawing people from all over the world. And the big feature are the, the trails that are available, and of course, the gravel roads, which we have a lot of in Lycoming County and, and in Bald Eagle State Forest and so forth. So it's actually a great feature that we actually still have gravel roads. This slide here just, just goes over some of the details about the Pennsylvania Interscholastic Cycling League. These are our numbers from the league, with 1,300 student athletes across the state, 68 teams. The one thing I would like to note is our team is, is one of the founding teams. So we were there from the start, along with, I believe it was 18 other teams that started the league across Pennsylvania. They, I believe the trail hours of maintenance are listed up there, 6,400 hours of trail maintenance that students across the state put that, put that sort of time into cleaning up trails, and that's hugely significant. And DCNR provided, we, we applied for a grant last year as, as the league and to help grow the, grow the league across the state, and because of all, all of those trail work hours, the league was granted a grant of $150,000 last year. So.
All right, thanks, Joe. That's some of the, some of the facts about cycling, and you see that some of these events are already going on, and many, many people are involved. As Joe said, globally, we go to the Grinduro, meeting people from Germany, meeting people from Japan, from Holland, from everywhere across the globe, who, and they literally also have said, these are some of the best trails in this whole circuit, and they're racing in Japan and Germany, all, all over the world, and Austria, and they, they call these trails the best. We have incredible natural resources available, and we're asking the, the county government to begin to invest in this kind of activity and bringing these people to the community. And I'm, I'm at a city level, asking the city to be involved as well, as a county seat, to make this a place that people see as an outdoor recreation space. That's going to drive industry. We're going to need new outdoor stores, we're going to need kayak and bike rental centers, we're going to need a kayak and bike rental centers, we're gonna need a, we're gonna need County Parks and Rec outdoor branch, we really want that, envision that driving our parks and rec, so that we're getting kids from downtown who are never getting on a bike, or never floating down a creek, or never doing these activities out there and enjoying the natural resources, and benefiting in the ways that the kids have already mentioned that you do from doing so. How many of you kids are also running? How many of you are runners and trail runners? I say that, and I ask them that, just to point out that this isn't just for bikers, this is, everybody enjoys doing this, and outdoor lifestyle people all wanna be a part of this. And this kind of park, being accessible to our kids in town, we want them to ride right out of their house and go to the bike park, and develop those skills. And then there's a mountain bike team for them to be involved in. And now they're getting involved in things they never had the opportunity to be involved in, because we built something that they can be a part of, and it's a part of a larger thing, and it's literally a lifestyle change. And these are the kind of things that we see driving the change of attitude about our community, from one of, we had a great past to, wow, we've got a great future. And we're talking about a bike park and investing in a bike park today, and that is what we want, but we're talking about a small beginning toward that goal. And I want to thank the commissioners for allowing us to present today, it was a great opportunity, as you had mentioned, for us, we're excited to have the kids here to learn how government works, and appreciate your attention to helping them engage in that process, it's been absolutely wonderful.
Well, I have a couple of questions myself, so. So, we have a document, you can sit back down if you'd like, it says, "We the people", and it doesn't say, "We the people that are of age 18 and older", right? You are part of a government, right? You have a say, you have a voice in government, you're doing that today, right? You're coming to us today to ask for something. It's your county, you don't have to be 18, it's your county, and if you do things correctly, and you have a good plan, and you know the right people, right? And Shannon Rosman back there, she's probably the right person that you wanna lock in, right? Cause she gets things done, and that's what her job is, to make our community a better place to live and work. So, do we have any ideas or any clues as to any location that you'd like to place this park?
Do you want me to come to the mic?
Sure.
Yeah, please.
Absolutely.
So, the city has already drawn up our proposal to put a pump bike track, which is a part of what we would be looking for in Shaw Park, which I think is a decent location. We would prefer to see it down somewhere that interacts more directly with the Riverwalk, and also allows kids from Newberry and Williamsport, like sort of our centers of population, to reach more directly. So, somewhere like where the skate park is, carving out some area in that area where the new extension to the Riverwalk is going would be, we feel like would be an ideal location. Even if we crossed the river and went to south, the park in South Williamsport, below the Little League fields where there's, that's a tremendous space right there, and that would be a good location. Again, it's right, kinda want it to be on the Riverwalk, because even if it's not in your neighborhood, then as kids get a little bit older, I don't know about, these kids right here are running our neighborhood ragged with their bikes right now, and they're all over the place, but if they can get on the Riverwalk and go to the pump track, that allows it to, like, that's just like a highway system for bikes where kids can get to it from everywhere, so. That's part of our desire, is it would land somewhere close to Population Center, because again, we want this to be a beginning to driving business to the area, and by area we mean Williamsport and the immediately surrounding communities, we've got housing here, we've got hotels, but we have all the restaurants, and we have a beautiful downtown that we wanna continue to see flourish and develop, and there's just tremendous opportunity to do that, great things are in the works, so we want this to be a part of that movement.
How many acres do you think you need to put a park that would draw in people from around the East Coast?
Would we say like three and a half acres was kind of a starting spot, starting amount for that? If it could be bigger? Well, we could do all kinds of things, but three and a half acres would be like...
So Shannon, probably, boy, I pushed my memory here, we had a project with DCNR down in Sylvandale.
Right.
And there was, how many acres?
Oh my gosh, we must have 100 acres now, 60? Shannon, how many do we have in Sylvandale?
I, I think it is around 100.
Yeah, we have a lot of land down there that's right on the river, and I shouldn't say we, we, the county facilitated the purchase, and it's now in the possession of an authority.
And that is adjacent to the South Williamsport Park.
Right.
Which is right there with the bike path, and I'm not sure if that land could be used or not.
A lot of that is land, riverland, wetlands, so that couldn't be disturbed, but I wouldn't see why it wouldn't be, I'm sure that there was an environmental analysis done before the purchase, so, it would be a very good area at least that we're located.
DCNR would love it, because DCNR put up over a million dollars, and DEP, and in our first term, and in our second term, we've been able to get that land so that it's actually out of private hands, now in the hands of an authority, and we need to connect you with the people, and planning can help do that.
What's DCNR stand for?
Department of...
Conservation and Natural Resources.
Right, that's good, good point. But in all seriousness, they, the Secretary of DCNR would be thrilled, because that's they wanted, that's a place they're also wanna develop access to the river and a lot of other things, so.
Could give you enough parking, you know? Just an idea, just an idea.
Well, the great thing about that location is that when people come in from out of town, they can stay in the hotels downtown, they can go across the river and have access now to outdoor recreation, that also allows them, it's so close, I mean, you can't, you know, you go to these other cities and you have to drive and park and everything, here, they'd be on their bikes, and I think you raise a really good point about the kids being able to access it without parents having to drive them there, right? They're 13, 14, they're old enough and to be able to do it. You know, I wanna mention a couple of people who are here, one of them is Sue Stackhouse, and I think Sue should come up, because Sue is with STEP AmeriCorps, and I think it's important for us to understand what role STEP AmeriCorps has played in this as a community organizing agency.
Thank you, Rick. Yeah, I was tapped last year about helping with the mountain bike team, which I honestly knew nothing about. AmeriCorps is a national service program, helping nonprofits, and a lot of times, the service positions can go into employment. Jason Fink, many of you know him, he actually told me a few years ago, he went, when he was in college, he did AmeriCorps service work, because you get some stipends and you get some educational awards, so it helped him with his college. But from my standpoint, with the mountain bike team, I was asked to come on to help grow the team, again, not knowing anything about this. Working with Joe Tavani, the coach, and the other coaches, and STEP also, AmeriCorps, putting a position together, how can we help grow this team? Jamie had said, the team's been around for eight years, and they've pretty much been stagnant, not growing, but continuing, so how do we grow it? And the point was, or the mission was, let's get into the school districts, try to get teams going. Some school districts were very welcoming to Joe and I coming in and talking to them, others were not, and we all know, everybody has schedules, but the schools that allowed us to come in and talk to physical education classes, even having group assemblies, knowing about the team, has really helped us grow the team. Very happy with this, I just looked at the numbers last week, we have 15 returning student athletes this year, and we have 16 new ones this year. Some of that, it's not all due to the STEP AmeriCorps position, or me, or Joe, but it was the whole team, bring a friend, who do you know at school, the school districts that were on board with us saying, hey, yes, we want to see these kids active. And we found, you know, this may be a theater, a lot of middle school kids, our team does grade six through 12, but as these kids get older and they get into high school, there's a possibility of competing at a high school level, so a lot of growth would come with that.
You know, to the parents who hopefully somehow, I have to credit my wife and my son really for finding out, my son is on the team, for finding out about this, and I give her, I give her a lot of credit. But here's the thing, for parents, there are resources for you to get kids engaged in, whether it's this, or scouting, or 4H, or whatever it is, that go beyond some of the traditional things, that not every kid necessarily wants to be on a football team or wants to be on a basketball team, and they're okay too, or wrestling, right? But there are resources to teach kids skills to cope with life, and to get our kids physically active, because physical recreation helps to prevent depression, it helps to deal with mental health issues, that's across the board, whether you're eight years old or 80 years old, right? But I think it's really important for the members of our community to understand that, and to know that they should get their kids engaged, and, you know, I'd like someone from the team to explain that you don't have to have a lot of money, that, and even if you are financially challenged, there's resources available so that your kid can be on a bike, right? Yeah, tell that.
Yeah, sure, I will. Thank you, Rick. Yeah, and that's one of the things with the team, that Joe and I talk to the school districts and try to talk to parents too, if there is a financial need, it's as simple as filling out a form, and I'll give you the parameters, if you're, if a child is on a school lunch program, they're automatically, their fees are paid, they may be able to be able to get a bike, we can make that happen for them. I think we have three bikes and five coming from DCNR because of the grant. I just talked to a gentleman outside the building today that says, hey, I have this bike, I wanna be able to give it to somebody, it needs built, how can we do this? So, it is about finding out, you know, what the needs are. We also have homeschoolers, they may not be on a school lunch, there's still the application they can fill out and ask for that, but we will, and from what I've seen in the past year, we will make it happen if a student needs fees paid, they need help with assistance, however, all they have to do is talk to us. And that's a good point, I talked to Pat here earlier, but we're gonna follow up, but it's getting people to understand, they're reading an article in the newspaper, hearing about it, that there are resources available, and people don't always like to ask, so that's part of my position and my outreach, is to let people know, we can make it happen. Bring your kid to a practice, let him experience it, and we'll work out the rest.
Great, thank you.
You know, the other person, is Jason Fink still here?
No, he left.
He left. Jason, I was really glad Jason came, he's the president of the chamber, and I know Jason is a biker, he's a cyclist, I know that he's committed, he has taken the commissioners out to Priority Bike, which is actually a manufacturer of bicycles in Montgomery, Pennsylvania. They are belt-driven bikes, Priority Bike was featured on the Super Bowl, I think, in a commercial, was it a Super Bowl? Yep, for Microsoft, it's a little different kind of bike, but the point that was made about economic development is that there are lots of ways to kickstart our economy through recreation, and at the same time, teach our kids skills that they have their entire life, it's like a win-win-win.
I'm gonna thank everyone for being here, and continued success, as you grow and maintain that healthy lifestyle.
This was an awesome experience for us. Great. I have to ask you one more question and one more comment, how many of you text while you're...
He's either the only honest one here, or he's gotta have a lesson in not texting and biking.
There's a lesson here right now, because the whole team is now doing push-ups, just saying, both hands belong on the handlebars, we know that.
Doctor, are you the cause everybody's doing that? Is that what Sue's saying?
Well, you know, it's nice to enjoy an activity that you're not on your phone.
Right.
Get away from them. You guys are running, you're biking, you're, you are the future leaders, and through your example, you'll help other kids get involved, and it's pretty awesome, and you look like a great kid.
And like Izzy said, you know, these are, these are skills that are gonna help you for a lifetime, leadership skills.
You know, the $500,000, I think that, when you think about it, between DCNR, maybe the commissioners have appropriated money for recreation, and I don't even know if we've put any aside, but we put aside a million dollars. Between other opportunities and grants, I don't think that's a pipe dream, I think that's something that we can find a way, but you need to do the work, as Commissioner Maser said, and you all are here today telling us you represent every part of the county, and you, and this is something that makes a lot of sense, so, we need to get you all connected with the state reps, Jamie Flick, and you need to connect with them, Jamie Flick and Joe Hamm and Senator Yaw, you need to talk to them about reaching DCNR, talk to John Lavelle, who's been wonderful and has come to some meetings, and Shannon and the folks in the planning department about how do we apply for the grants, how do we apply to the commissioners, how do we apply to all of these places and make it a reality? So, kids, here's the great thing about being in government, you can look back one day, you know, 20 years from now is forever, right? You look back and you say, you know what, I was at the meeting on August 3rd, 2023, when we started to get the track built, and it will mean something to you, if you haven't forgotten it by then, in all seriousness, it really will.
And now you know politicians like to talk a lot, you guys are ready to go biking, right?
Okay, thank you, everybody, and you're welcome to state bike too. If I was you guys, I could get on my bike and get out of here.
We'll take a photo.
Team, get, whole team go up front, please, for a photo.
Maybe get the taller folks in the back, right? And the coaches, right? Sue, you gotta get up there.
All right, I'm taking two.
Can you get everyone?
Yep, I got it, you just gotta scooch in a little bit, yep. One, two, three. All right.
Commissioner, I challenge you to sit on that bike.
All right, one, two, three, one more. I'd like to see that. We can make it happen.
Great to have you, kids.
Thank you very much.
You guys can stay or take off, it's totally up to you, we, thank you so much for coming. Much of an agenda left, actually, but it's up to you guys, if you wanna, I think you're gonna hit the road, right, Jamie?
Yeah.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Really proud of all of you. Thank the parents, by the way, and the volunteer coaches.
Okay. Personnel actions, Jessica.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners, good morning, Director, seeking your approval on the following personnel actions as conditional offers of employment, subject to the successful completion of a background check and all other employment conditions. For the DA's office, Eric Berth, Assistant District Attorney, full-time replacement, hired at $64,856.38 per year, and he is transferring on, or he transferred, excuse me, on July 31st. 31st. For RMS, Jackie Clennard, truck driver, floater, full-time replacement, hired at $1,872 per hour, and transferring on August 6th. For facilities, Stephen White Knight, hired as the Deputy Director, full-time replacement, at $64,759.50 per year, anticipated to start on August 7th. For PRC, Roland Miller, RS1, full-time replacement, hired at $1,810 per hour, and anticipated to start on September the 3rd.
Take a motion?
I'll move to approve.
It's good to see that we have the Deputy Director for the Facilities Management finally filled, we've been looking for that for, I think, two years.
We were trying to figure out how long that's been posted this morning, and several years was my understanding, so.
It was a new position created to, to help Ken George and his, his moving forward.
Transfer knowledge, succession planning, absolutely. I also wanted to share, commissioners, our, when I started in January of 2022, we had over 65 openings, and as of this week, we have 15 openings. So we're making some pretty great progress. Our prison has just a few openings, we filled our, most of our equipment operator positions at the landfill, so we're making a lot of progress.
Okay, sounds good, thank you. All fair side?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr.? Hi.
Catherine, you have one more?
Huh?
Action items.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't even. All right. Seeking your approval on the agreement with Aerotech. This is a 2023 budgeted item, and this is a staffing agreement to assist us with any of our staffing needs that are left at RMS.
Okay, motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner, seeking your approval on a loan agreement with Susquehanna Valley costing the amount of $30,000.
Okay, motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Well, this organization is very important for our children in our communities, where they're co-appointed special advocates for children. And when you see our children and youth, and you, you look at all the challenges that face our, our kids today, these people are very critical, very important to be part of the system. And we need volunteers to, to help be an advocate of these children, and to, you know, it can help them stay safe, or feel safe, and it's really important. So I'm asking anyone that would be willing to look at the organization, get involved.
And this is a loan to help CASA, because of the budget not being passed, the state funding has not been passed through, this helps them continue to maintain their staff and maintain the volunteers, the things that they need, as the state eventually adopts their budget, returns the monies back, will be paying us back.
And, and I see we have Mr. Branton, who's on the board or president of the board?
Treasurer.
Treasurer, do you want to come up and just talk a little bit about CASA's mission, or?
I can, quick, if you want.
Sure.
Great, thank you.
CASA stands for Court Appointed Special Advocate. How long maybe you've been involved, and?
Morning.
Morning. Chris Branton, I'm the Treasurer of Susquehanna Valley CASA. CASAs are appointed by, by the court to work with some of the worst cases of children who are currently in custody of the state. We meet individually with kids, one-on-one, with the idea being that we understand and get their needs, because once they're into the court system, yes, they have a lawyer assigned, but that lawyer might have 50 other cases, they have judges, they have children and youth who all do great jobs, but we are literally one-on-one and get to know them a lot better. We have that one case, and that's all. I think currently in Lecombe County, we're serving 18, which is about 30% of the kids that are, are currently taken in by the state. And then we write reports to what we suggest, to what the kids want, as far as custody, mental health, physical health, how they're doing in school, all of those things. So the judge reads those reports and then kind of makes recommendations based on those. We are, currently 18 people, 18 kids that we serve in Lecombe County, there's needs for more, like you said, volunteers were always open, we started training class next week, so also train and manage all the volunteers that are in the county. And as you mentioned, this is a bridge loan, just to get us through until we hopefully get our, our grants come through from, from the state. So we certainly appreciate.
And you're a volunteer?
Yeah, I've been a volunteer for three years now, I started as a volunteer three years ago, and now, within the last month, I became the treasurer, so.
And the nature, these kids are often in the court system because they're collateral, collateral involvement. In other words, the parents might be going through something, or.
Yeah, all of the kids that we deal with have been effectively taken from their parents at this point. The goal is to reunite them back with their parents, but the court system is deemed that the parents are not able, at this time, to handle their kids, and they become a ward of the state through Children and Youth Services, and that's, all of our kids are in that, that's the only kids that we can work with, ones that are physically taken out of their homes at that point. With, again, the, the primary goal is to reunite them with their children, with their parents again, there's also a duel, which is to find another place for them to go, if that happens. So a lot of our kids are in foster homes, and the one I'm currently working with has been in three or four different foster homes. We're trying to get, I think after two and a half years, he's finally going to have a permanent home, hopefully at the end of the month.
And you're the voice of the child, you're the voice, you articulate, right?
You mentioned training, so how often do you have training?
We run training at least twice a year, there's one starting this week, there's another one scheduled for the fall. We have a website and also a Facebook page where they, you can sign up for the training. The training, I believe, is 40 hours of training that you get through, most of it's online, so you can do it remotely, but there is some in person, and then there's a swearing-in ceremony, because you are an officer of the court, and then you become a, can get assigned a case from there. And the monies that we're having really are for the people to manage, the volunteers, because you have to have the training, and you have to also have the volunteers report and, and have someone that oversees them, and that's where the majority of our costs are.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And a motion and a second, all fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carry.
All right, 5.3, Commissioner, seeking your approval on the 2023-2024 Election Integrity Grant application in the amount of $371,620.91. This is actually up a little bit more from the previous grant year.
Okay, a motion?
I'll move to approve.
All fair side?
Aye.
So carry.
All right, Commissioner, comment?
Gentlemen, you have any?
No, I don't think I have any.
Okay. Public, public comments, we ask you to please, if you come up to a little bit, to county issues, and we have anybody who'd like to do public comment, Mr. Adams?
Morning.
Morning, Commissioner, Tom Adams, Williamsport. Bible in Psalm 6835 mentions how God of Israel Himself gives strength and power to the people, and that's what our government's based on, and that's a unique government, and it's great to see how it works locally, like, great to see the kids here, to see that, how, you know, see how this kind of operates on a local level. And in Acts 1035, it says, "In every nation, the one who fears Him and does what is right is acceptable to him." So this is a God of, of all people, it's not limited to one race, and, and it's not limited to one culture, and that's what really drove, drove America to become great, and we need to remember that, as our founders, one of the founders, John McLean, he was a U.S. Postmaster General and a Justice of the Supreme Court, in essence, he said in one of his quotes, is that what would the world look like without the influence of the Bible? And we see that in countries where they ban the Bible, don't allow Christianity to grow, we see the results of it, and as, we see the darkness coming on the land when we take away those God-given natural rights, freedom of thought, freedom of conscience, which is really freedom of religion, is freedom of conscience. And, and when things begin to get that crushing blow of government becoming God, that's where we face a lot of danger. Mentioned about the kids with the, the bikes, that's, that's really great, they're doing the forest trails, I think that's really unique, because we do need to clean our forests, and that helps a little bit, and maybe we can find ways to, and maybe get some of these kids, employ them somehow to expand in those areas and, and get some of that stuff cleaned out of there so they're safer. But thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Yes, sir.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Rob Cooley, I'm faculty at Penn College, and I'm also the Vice President of the Susquehanna Valley Velo Club, and I've been working with the Lecombe, not bike composite team, also talking about the skills track and pump track and stuff like that. I also, I really appreciate the time that you give the team, and I really appreciate the energy and the interest in the project, because I think if you look at other communities that have engaged in these types of projects, a lot of benefits have come, long-term, sustainable economic benefits. But I just also wanted to point out that the timing of this is really unique, because our Greenway is developing, you know, the Lowell Sock is working, actively working on the Millers Run Greenway Connector, from James Short, Bruce Henry, and Parks, and the Riverwalk. The Basin Street Old City Project is happening, the Willow Street Improvement is happening that's going to make it more pedestrian, bike-friendly connector through the city. The extension from the west end of the Riverwalk through Penn College's campus out towards Susquehanna State Park is happening, Maynard Street is probably getting a facelift. There's a lot of opportunity here, and, and obviously, the, the long-term of the Greenway coming from the Allenwood area all the way up through to Pine Creek and connecting out to Lock Haven. My sons and I, I have twin sons in Lowell Sock, they're 17, the three of us rode from Pittsburgh to DC two summers ago on the, the Great Allegheny Passage and the Chesapeake and Ohio Rail Trail, or Topam, it was a phenomenal bike camping experience, and in some of the materials I have, the, those, the tourism and revenue draw of that particular resource, people come from all over the world to ride that. And I think, not only is there the skills track, pump track project focused on the team and the community, I can see kids playing on that all day long, but it really, really, really does position Williamsport to become a hub for outdoor recreation that would rival what Pittsburgh, I mean, if you look at Point, Point, Point State Park, and the Waterfront Trail, and then McKeesport, and Homestead, and Newton, and Boston, and all those towns that were basically rustbelt steel towns that were collapsing, that now have B&amp;Bs and coffee shops and restaurants and bike shops, and people coming and stopping in picnic areas and revitalizing their, I mean, it's, it's been transformative. So I really appreciate the open-minded reception that y'all gave, and I'm looking forward to being a part of this.
Great question for you.
Thank you.
When you say bike and camp, so is that what you did?
Yes, we loaded all our stuff on our bikes and rode the whole thing, self-contained. How, how many miles was that? 400. Wow. My kids were 15 when they did it.
It was a great experience.
It was amazing.
You know, Mr. Cooley, when I heard you speak, you raised a really good, interesting perspective, because both colleges will benefit from this, because when kids are deciding where they're going to go to college, part of, I remember when I was a kid, I was looking at one school, which was in inner-city Philadelphia, and at the time, it was really, really dangerous, and the other one was.
Be careful, that's my law school.
Oh, is it? Okay. And the other one, I'm sorry, but at the time, in 1974, it was very, very dangerous, and the city suffered from a lot of, and the other place was, was up the road in the beautiful country. And so the point is that to build the enrollment at Penn College and at Lecombe College, this will drive it. That enrollment being driven is what helps us, you know, one of the reasons our population has declined is that those populations have declined, right? Both universities are challenged with it, because for every kid, for every 100 kids that go, there are a certain number will stay here.
Yes.
There's no question, statistically, that's going to happen. So the more we can do, and, and as I was listening to you, thinking about those 15-year-old kids on that bike trip of yours, I'm thinking, wow, when kids are looking, they're saying, and the parents are saying, you know, what, what is there to do, so?
Actually, to that point, I have students at Penn College come to me, hey, where, where can I go biking, where can I go fishing? And I've got all maps and stuff in my office. We're actually working on developing a more formalized campus resource to help students find those outdoor resources. But I'm like, hey, you know the Riverwalk's right here?
Yeah.
Oh, really? Wow, and then they're going, hey, I went here, I went there, you know, I have students ride to Walmart from Penn College if they don't have a car.
And like.
And, and bikes are also transportation, they're not just for fun.
Our, our planning department is with the GIS, is doing some layovers, and with other communities.
Right.
Even outside of Lecombe County.
Is that with John Lavelle and, and?
Yeah, they're working on that, yeah, Amy.
Yeah.
So that's, hopefully, that attracts more and more people, because there's so many ATV trails, hiking, biking, and.
Yes.
And nobody knows about them, so.
I'm hoping that we can all kind of.
Yep, they'll compile all that data and the maps, and, and it should be very beneficial.
Yeah.
And you know, Lecombe College has put together, when you mentioned that you're doing that at Penn, Lecombe has put together a whole program, outdoor program, you can go up there, they've got a climbing wall, they've got kayaks.
I've interfaced with them, because I teach a class at Penn College about outdoor recreation as a therapeutic tool for the Human Service and Sort of Justice Program.
Yeah.
And they've shared some of their resources for me for my classes, so it's been great. One last thing, just before I go, there's a sort of an ad hoc group called Williamsport that I sort of revived, and some of the, the people here today are part of that, and we're kind of hoping to help as a citizens group to help with whatever projects and efforts are going on, like you were talking about, to kind of just shepherd them all together, make sure they all work together well, create a really nice product, you know, so however I can help.
Absolutely, and you folks have been part of the Williamsport Area Transportation, the WATS.
Yes.
Right? And so for future commissioners, whoever gets involved with the WATS, it's important to, to be of, you're a voice for it, but to also be a voice to reflect that in the community.
Yes.
So thank you.
Thank you. Here are my cards. Great, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thanks for sharing here. Thank you.
Mark?
Hi, Mark Messina from Montoursville. When they were talking about, you know, our, our best students and so many of our students that, that leave the area, and we understand that we want to create as many opportunities as possible for students who want to stay in the area to stay, but we also understand that there are a percentage of students who don't want to stay, that they just, they want the bright lights and the big city, just because they were born in a, in a rural area, they don't want to stay. But on the flip side of that, there are kids who are born in urban areas who like what we have to offer, and who would relocate, like Rick has done, and relocated and, and love it here. Has there ever been a, a strategy or to approach the, to target the kids in certain academic studies, like environmental sciences or, or anything of outdoor recreation? So we go to the urban areas of like, the Philadelphias and the DCs and the Baldemores and the Pittsburg's, and show them what we have to offer, because there are kids that were born there that don't want to be there, that want to be here, and because of Williamsport, we have that uniqueness that we are, we are rural, but we have an urban feel, and that we could recruit, because we want to keep the best of our kids, obviously, but some of the best of our kids don't want to stay, but if we could get some of the best of their kids, like the best of Long Island's kids, and to come here, and then they become viable members of the community. So I know we always look at it like we need to keep the kids here, but that's an impossibility just because of the way they're wired. So if we could get the kids who want to be here, but, or they just know they want to be somewhere different or rural, and could we show that the attractiveness. or rural, and could we show that the attractiveness of all that Lecombe County has to offer? I didn't know if there was a good way to do it or if we've ever tried.
It's a good point. Statistically, they're gonna be kids, you're absolutely right. And by the way, the thing that we forget is some of our kids may go away and then come back.
A lot of them do.
A lot of them do, they'll come back. But you raise a good point. Part of what I wanted to discuss with, with Jason Fink was, Jason is on the board of the PA Wilds. And the PA Wilds is a state marketing entity that markets the entire PA Wilds and, and Lecombe County is the entrance to the PA Wilds. And so, you know, one of the things that, that the county could do is to try to interact with the PA Wilds. We do, we support the PA Wilds and we do it through the chamber. But maybe actually find a way to engage in, in marketing that doesn't cost money by contacting schools. We can send letters, we can, you know, you raised a good point. We can get citizens involved in taking that message. Citizens, let's say I grew up in Bucks County, right? And I'm living now in Williamsport. Maybe I'm willing to go down to my alma mater in Bucks County and, and talk about, about coming to rural America. Personally, what I think we need at the state level is what I call the Marshall Plan for Rural Pennsylvania, which is that we get the state government, the same way we did after World War II where we rebuilt Europe by putting a lot of resources into it. We get state government engaged in a Marshall Plan to bring, create programs that bring people from the congested urban areas to our rural areas. Because to rebuild the population here, we need to put resources into it. And it may be, listen, you come to rural America, you come to rural Pennsylvania, you work there, we're gonna help offset your student loans. Because you're not gonna make the same wage here that you're gonna make there, you know, all across the or whether you're working in a white collar job, the wages are different. We need to create incentives, we need to, and, and government creates incentives all the time. We create incentives for businesses to come. We need to find a way to create incentives for people to come. And I think the state government and frankly, federal government, if I were, if I were president, that's what I would be doing. Because rural America is really at risk of, of disappearing. And it has so much to offer at the root of what the country was. It was a rural country, right? It was founded. So this, I think, I think it's a great idea and there's ways for you to do it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody online?
Keystone Chief, first. Keystone Chief, FY, FYI. There was about 16 to 18 minutes missing from the beginning of this life. William Fenderson, Reach Road coming off 180, need to be fixed. This has a hole in it and has been like this for the last two years. And this is the hub of the factories going into Reach Road.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the comments. We have completed our agenda, so we'll be adjourned till August 10th, 2023, right here in this meeting room. Thank you.